Hi, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee for the National Board of Education. It's Tuesday, July 16th. It's 4:30, and we're meeting in the Nashua High School North Boardroom. And I'm sorry, it's not 4:30, it's 4:40. And today, well, I am here, and Mr. Claffey and Ms. Daniels-Williams were unable to attend, but we have Ms. Print.
Here.
And we have Ms. Bishop.
Here.
And we also have Dr. Andre, Mr. Donovan, Mr. Smith, and our new COO, Crystal DeGray. Thank you for joining us. And we're going to begin with Sean, I think, for the capital improvement project.
Yeah, I'll probably tag-team this one. So every fall, usually November, sometimes December, I go to Board of Ed and say, these are the capital projects we're looking at doing in the future, and also, this is the deferred maintenance list we'd like to do in the future. At the same time, you approve what I've put together, and oftentimes, it's just, it's kind of a rehash of what was there the year before, it just updated. So if we have to complete some projects, those come off the list, and otherwise, we add new stuff pretty much every year. So once you approve that, it goes to the city's capital improvement committee. That consists of various aldermen and private citizens that are on the panel. And they listen to us and to all the other city departments, and they come up with this document.
Yeah, that was very, it's very comprehensive. I would encourage everyone to look at it and see what kind of plans we have for the city.
But when they, after they've listened to everything, they deliberate, and they rate all the projects, anywhere from A through E. A being essential, B being desirable, C acceptable, and D is deferrable. E is other. And how they rate them. And then they put them all in this binder, and they give it to the mayor and the alderman. Kind of ends there, because then it's up to the individual departments to go. Per maintenance, a little bit of a difference there. The school department, I mean, we request a certain amount of money. The mayor actually weighs in on how much we actually get, and $1,000.
Is this going to, is this going to change the way you do your deferred maintenance presentations every year?
Not at this point. Well, the city is looking at the whole process, because we continually go through this process, and you will see some projects even in this document that are down lower, that somehow they get funded. So it's, they want to change that. You'll hear on Thursday night, actually, the results of their ad hoc committee, that they've kind of identified they want to spend $30 million a year for projects, and plans far outweigh what's available. So they've had to prioritize things, and I don't want to spill the beans on Thursday night, but. So we've submitted all the projects, you heard of them before, last fall or last winter. Go to page eight and nine on, in that document, it shows that we have, as a city, 246 million plus in the docket of projects to do. Buy that by 30 every year, it's going to take forever, and we'll be adding. It's a tough thing for them to weigh what actually gets done. In the document itself, they have long-term projects and short-term projects. So our highest-rated long-term project was deferred maintenance.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Deferred maintenance. It was the, our highest-rated long-term was deferred maintenance. It received a B1.
Okay.
B again being desirable.
Desirable.
Yep. And it just listed all the projects. School district has done it differently than the other departments. The other departments put in individual projects, and we just lump all of ours in deferred maintenance. So that's one of those things that we'll have looked at in the future for the process.
Interrupt quick. So this $1,135, it's on page 11, school deferred maintenance, it gives the detail of what that equals, okay? The reality is, we ended up, through the budget process, with $500,000. So even though it shows up in here, this is just a recommendation, and then the actual funding of it is done through the budget process at the alderman level.
So, so all of things, things have to be funded by the alderman? We don't have plans to do any of them with our deferred maintenance?
No, well, Sean will decide which of these items he can, he's going to have $500,000. He requested $1,135. He will then decide which of these 1,135 he can get done with the $500,000.
Right, and I'll come back to you. So they tell us we have this amount of money in July. It's too late to get anything done in the summertime. So typically, this is work that's going to take place next spring and next summer. And probably this fall, I will come back to you with a proposal, and this is how we should spend it. If we still have money left over from last year, then I'll just outline the whole plan for you with the money that we have in hand.
Are these listed A through I in order of the priority for you, or?
Somewhat, no, I wouldn't say these exact priority. But like the classroom storefronts, that was a multi-year project, so we received money last year to do that. And this summer, we're doing actually six classroom fronts at Bicentennial. Hopefully, next summer, we can do another five.
Would these five be the last ones? Okay.
Probably 30 classrooms at Bicentennial. We've done, after the summer, will be 12, 15.
Okay. So halfway is pretty good.
Well, yeah, and it's something I've been knocking the table about for a long time. If you give us incremental amounts of deferred maintenance money, that's going to avoid that big $20 million project, you know, 10 years down the road, when you could have chipped away at it along the way. Two different approaches of how it can be done. So again, I'll come back to you and say, okay, we have $500,000, and this is what I propose we do.
Okay.
Then if you go further back in the projects, you get to short-term projects. Our highest-rated short-term project are security projects, followed closely by the repaving of the North High School. I don't know how much detail you want. You can read the menu here, what it's all about. So those rated B2, B3 is Stelo Stadium. I'll have some issues with, have some issue with that, as does Lisa, because we feel their safety issues with the field. Next joint special, we're actually going to bring it up.
I thought that we had given you funds already for the field.
You approved sending it to the alderman.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Nothing has happened since.
Okay.
But I think we talked to Alderman Dowd about it, we just need to bring it up to joint special, and then they'll give it a push. Alderman Dowd said, well, it's not in our $30 million plan for this year.
Okay.
Do a little thumb wrestling with them, figure out how to fund it. I just got the new GMAX test. And GMAX is where they, there's the hardness of the surface, and if you get the data, 10% of all athletic concussions come when the head hits the ground. Certain areas of the field that exceed safety limit for that. So it's something we feel pretty strongly we should proceed with sooner than later.
Okay.
So moving along, still, then they have those long-term projects. We, I've kind of bundled a lot of different school renovation projects on this one. So this is, someday, these projects will happen. I suppose 2029 will be the next one. Pleasant is a different issue, I can talk about that a little bit later. Move back, I just tabbed all the places where we had the school department. We do need to, we can't wait for the next renovation of Bicentennial to replace the roof. It's already leaking, it's past its warranty, it's 30 years old, it's time to replace it. So I'm hoping in the next couple of years, we can push that.
I'm actually surprised to see Bicentennial on here. We just did, wasn't that one of those schools we just, no, the other one, Birch Hill. I always get them confused, I'm sorry. Okay.
It was Broad Street. No, Bicentennial actually was renovated, it was being completed in 1997. Pushing 30 years here pretty soon. I've also got New Searls in here as an extra renovation after that. And then further back, I have, on page 36 is Mount Pleasant. And also on page 36 is a Santa Life air filtration system. So the joint special approved doing that at the three middle schools. So that funding has already been taken care of.
Okay.
That will reduce this number a little bit. We'll still have the high schools and former elementary schools to do. During the renovation at Birch Hill and Magdustville, we're also installing that system, so that's taken, that's already paid for as well. So this number will actually go down a little bit when we redo the study next year. That's kind of it. I personally disagree with some of the rankings that they provide, the bigger picture, look at what the city needs, that's where they.
Okay, I mean, it's a, it's a good place to start with our conversations on Thursday, I think. Do you have any questions, Kristin? Is there anything that anyone else wants to add?
Well, I think just that if you take a look at this document, you get a sense of the requests that are coming, like it was 246 million. This ranking really doesn't, we have an item in here, the security vestibule is ranked a B, we're already doing it. So simply because it's ranked in here as a B, and other things are an A, sometimes the Bs end up getting ahead of the As.
Okay.
So this document is some advice, but then it's the alderman and the JSSBC that decide this is more important.
Okay.
You know, and I think sometimes, Sean, like if a roof were to cave in, that would obviously move to the top, there's emergencies, so things change. But I think if you just sort of take a look at this, Sean, as he said, will, shares the detail every December, and then this report comes out in the spring. So you can just get a sense citywide of all the various requests. That's just, I think, a good review, because sometimes we get stuck with, okay, the schools are the number one thing, and they should get all the money. Even though I think they should get the most money, they shouldn't get all the money.
We certainly do get most of the money.
We do. Well, we're the biggest department.
It's nice that the city invests in our school system.
Yes.
All right, so I guess we'll go on to the special education contracts. I mean, there's quite a few of them.
Special education contract renewals for this current school year, the 24-25 school year. There's a number of them here. Just to give you a little heads up, going forward, we've had, some of these contracts are charged to grants, the IDEA grant, and as we go through them quick, we'll note that. The grant process is requiring more in the way of RFPs going forward. So there was a discussion with the special ed department about how we do this going forward, because some of this is fairly specific. And also, there are items on here, let's say, if we're going to get one-on-one nurses. You can't just have one agency that you do that with. So if you're going to do an RFP, if that's what they're going to require us to do, we'll certainly do it, but we may have more than one winner, so to speak, of the RFP, because if you just pick one agency and they can't provide the nursing care that you need, then where are you? So you may have to have multiple outlets.
Okay.
So here's, this is just a list, I'll run through them quick. The first one is Boothby Therapy Services for $43,200. This is for alternative augmentative communication services, and it's being charged to the IDEA grant. We've been using Boothby for a long time now. They're experts in alternative augmentative communication, which I believe is for students that aren't.
Verbal.
Verbal. So they work with them using the various tools that are available to them.
I'm actually surprised that that's not more money. How much time do they actually spend in the classroom, one-on-one with the kids?
This is a, it's a rate per hour, per unit. So it's, this, I'm just looking at the summary page. But the 43-2, the way we do a contract with them, and they'll say, we'll provide this many hours of service.
Okay.
And that's how they come up with the 43-2. If we have more than that, yeah, so it's 36 weeks, 1,208 hours. So they, they take a look at, since we've worked with them, they take a look at the existing kids, and they project, this is the needs, these are the needs you're going to have for these students, and then we sign this contract. If we get a new student, or a student drops out, or maybe a student needs more, then we can add on to this contract.
Okay.
All right. The next one is the Carroll Center for the Blind for Orientation and Mobility Services for Visually Impaired Students. This is also being charged to the grant. We have also been using Carroll Centers for the Blind for a long time. This is a service that isn't, it's not that commonplace. I'm sure there's a few other people that do it, but it's, you know, it's not like going out and finding a place that sells lettuce, right? I mean, there's, there's not a lot of them. So we've been using this group, we've been very happy with their response. You will notice that there's, the IDEA grant is going to pay for $96,000 of the total contract. And then there's for the 504 students, that is going to get charged to the operating budget, because the IDEA grant, it has to be special ed. 504 is not considered special ed.
Okay.
And the reality with the 504, there's more and more costs associated with that than it had in years. Five years ago, it was, I couldn't tell you if we had any 504 cost, something that's been ramping up.
And there's no grants for that? Okay.
Not currently. Okay, here to learn for audiology services for hearing impaired students, and that will also be funded by the grant, that's $20,475. 117 hours, $175 an hour. So once again, they, it's a very specific amount of hours, so they've worked with the students before, they know what the plan is for each student on a week, Lisa.
I, I know that we have a lot of, we have this really great program for kids that are hearing challenged or hearing impaired. And this isn't a, do we have a teacher for them, a teacher of the deaf who's paid separately than this?
Yes.
Okay, so this is only someone that will come in to supplement that?
Exactly.
Who covers for that class if the teacher is out sick?
So there's, there's actually a number of staff. So we, New Searls, there's a few teachers and a few power educators who are staffed in that classroom. So the students always have access to someone who can help them with their, with their language.
Okay.
It is difficult to find a sub off the street that.
Oh, yeah.
But, no, our students are, there is enough staff to support our students if someone's ill.
Okay.
Now, the next one is the beginning of a few in a row that are related to the inability of the district to find personnel to hire to do this work. So we've had to reach out to these outside services. Last few years, we've had to do this for a number of positions like this. We had ESAR funding, which has now ended, and we had some money in the operating budget for it. In next year's operating budget, there's $1.5 million in this coming school year's to cover these kind of costs. Add to that, the salaries put aside for these people, because we budgeted the people, and if we don't fill the position, which it looks like a number of them aren't going to be filled already, we then take the salary and put it with the 1.5, and then we pay the agency. So the first one, Leap Learning, that's $162,000. So that's the cost of providing a school psychologist.
The name there is not necessarily the person who'd be providing the service, right? The Dr. Yulimar Burgos?
Believe that is.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes. So he'll be providing the services, but we'll be paying that agency 162, whereas if we had hired that position, it would be on the teacher grid, and it could be paid 60,000, or 70,000, or 80,000. So you can see, it's significantly more using the outside service.
I there, I noticed that none of these are covered by the IDEA grant. If they're helping kids with special education needs, wouldn't that help at all?
It could, but we only have so much money in the IDEA.
Okay.
So typically, what we budget in the IDEA grant is sort of specific ones like Boothby and Carroll, and then we have certain teachers in the district. I think there's about 25 that we charge to the IDEA grant. So of our special ed department of, group of teachers, 25 are paid for with the grant.
Okay.
But when there's additional costs like this, the grant just doesn't have enough. It's about what?
As, as our special education population has grown, have we seen an increase in that grant? Okay.
I mean, it's gone up a little, down a little. It's been fairly steady at around between 3.5 and 4.5 million a year. It's, keep in mind, this is money from the federal government. They come up with whatever their total pool for each grant is, and then they share it with all 50 states.
Does the state have any money earmarked for special education?
Not in this grant. They do give us some money for sort of out-of-district students and things.
Okay.
So that's the first one, Leap Learning, 162. The next one, the Regional Services and Education Center, that's $145,000, and that's to cover a position for a psychologist, and that's the name, try to pronounce that name, but we'll just call her Marie. She's going to, so she's an outside person. So just like Leap Learning, these two, these are outside service providers that'll provide these. And then there's another one for the same amount for another psychologist. So as you can see, psychologists are hard to find. They're one of the more difficult positions to fill. To be a psychologist, you need an advanced degree. And to be honest, these people can make a lot more money working for these agencies than they can working for us.
Are these, they say, they both say partially cover. Does that mean that these people are only going to be working part-time for our district, or, I mean, they'll be coming in part-time, or?
Well, it'll, yeah, I mean, I think partially covered, the way that will give us, they're, they're going to work like three or four days a week as opposed to five days a week. That's the other thing you'll see with contractors, some of the, some of the reasons people work for contractors, not just the pay, but they might only want to work three days a week.
But this is two different charges for 145,000?
Yes, because they're two different people. But the same services, they're both psych services. Okay, the next one down is White Birch, and this is for bilingual psych evaluations. So if you think it's hard to find psychologists, try to find bilingual psychologists. That's always been a challenge, you know, seven, eight years ago, we probably didn't have one of those. But I think we have one person in-house that has this capability, but they're few and far between.
Okay.
And then the next one is another school psychologist. White Birch for $99,750. Last one is to cover two open positions for speech, excuse me, speech pathologists. Those are, you know, other positions that are difficult, not as hard as psychologists, but, so these are the kind of positions that we've been forced to go outside to get, and costs are going to be higher using these services than had we hired the people. So it's a shortage, we have to provide the service, and I think special ed does a pretty good job figuring out, okay, how many hours does each student need, and the time, and so it's, you know, we don't have people sitting there on their phones, you know, for actually doing. This going forward will be one of sort of the challenges that the district has in how we deal with this going forward.
Do you have a total? I don't even know if I want to hear it, it must be so huge.
No, I'd have to add it up. But, you know, so all this last, this last group is all getting charged to the.
What are we doing as a district to try and, I mean, I guess it's a two-part question. How many school psychologists do we have? Do we have any at all?
We have six or seven, so.
Maybe a few more than that. I think, if I had to guess, it's probably about 15 positions. Some of them will be covered this way, but we still, and how many actual ones, maybe 10? I, I mean, it's in the budget, you could look.
I was just wondering, what can we do to attract? Need to pay.
I think Mr. Donovan hit the, like, we try to network as much as possible and recruit people in, but as Mr. Donovan said, there's, you know, people coming out of school who are working for agencies instead of school districts, so. And then working for an agency, you can kind of pick and choose what you're doing. Some people like to test more, some people like to work with the students more, so. But overall, we like to recruit people in and not use the agencies if we could.
How much less do we pay than they could get at a private sector job?
A lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and so the other aspect, too, just two points of clarification. We do have signs of learning programs, not just at New Searls, it's at, New Searls, the middle school and the high school. So we have students K through 12 who require services for the hearing impaired. And then the other aspect, going back to the IDEA, is that, you know, as the teacher's contract goes up and benefits goes up, so we can still have the same 25 teachers every year, the money's staying the same, but we have to account for all the salaries and benefits going up, too. So this $4 million doesn't equal $4 million, like, every year, it's just, you know, the cost of the benefits and salaries. So we might have to take a teacher out of IDEA in order, and put it into the operating budget. So it's getting tighter with so many positions in there.
The only other, the only other difference, some schools don't have these people in the union, so they have more flexibility on offering money. They certainly probably can't pay what the private sector pays, but they might be able to pay more, because it's not tied to the contract.
Is that something that we could negotiate with any of our unions?
Well, it would be the teachers' union. You're going to start doing that next, this coming year, so it could be something you could discuss if you wanted to, but.
Okay.
Sponsor get, or maybe they have a special grid for themselves, it's a little different. Couple of things to think about.
Yeah.
So the total of just, sorry, the total is 912,000, that's rounded, of those. That's rounded of those psychs and paths. So that's 912,000, just, and if I add up all the salaries for that, it's probably about 400,000 or so. So of that 1.5 million, we've already probably got 400 to 500 of it. Hopefully, we don't have to fill too many more of these for the full year at least. The hardest thing is if you lose one of these people during the year for whatever reason, it's really hard to fill in the middle of the year. If you're going to hire one of these positions, you probably have to have it done by now.
What do we do if we lose someone and we can't hire them? Since we're legally obligated to have these services?
Yeah, we'll get an agency, or maybe there might be someone working three days, and they might say, hey, I'll work four days for the next two months while that person's out, or something like that. And they'll try to cobble it together.
Okay. You had a question, John?
I have a clarifying question, and I probably should know this. But school psychologists, do they work full year, or do they have the summers off like the teachers do?
Summers off.
Same. So do these consulting agencies, will they work through the summer? And then make up for maybe reports that don't get to get written during the year?
No, they, for the most part, I think they're during the school year too.
I think my knowledge of how testing goes, they have to, there's like certain dates that they have to have testing done by no matter what, and it falls within the school year calendar, if I remember correctly.
How much more work could get done if we could get it done during the summer?
Yeah.
We do have a team of special educators and school psychologists who will continue testing over the summer as well. Any kind of new referrals, so the process doesn't stop.
Okay, do you need, do I need to make a separate motion for all of these?
That's one option. I think an option might be to approve the contracts listed on the memo from Alyssa Cunningham dated July 9, 2024. I think that would work as a motion instead of going through each one.
Excellent. Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the special education contracts listed on the memo dated July 9, 2024, that's included in our packet.
Taken.
And any, okay, so aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. So that's unanimous. Thank you.
That's okay. I wanted to make sure you were all set. So in front of you this evening is a contract with a new provider for our athletic training services at the high school level. If you remember, about a month ago, I came before the HR committee talking about kind of pursuing two different avenues, whether or not we were going to pursue another contract with a company or hire directly as school district employees. And given the short turnaround time and finding the additional funds, and we just talked about when we hire people, that also comes with benefits. In several conversations with all of these people to my right, we decided that a two-year contract with a new provider is in the best interest of the school district and the safety of our students. So you have before you a two-year agreement with the Center for Physical Therapy and Exercise, otherwise known as CPTE. It is a two-year agreement. There are some dates in here. The dollar amount for the first year is 105,000. The second year is to be negotiated before we get into next year's budget process. And there is a date in there where we will negotiate that and determine what that dollar amount is. There's dates in here, in February of '26, we'll make the determination at that point after a year and a half in. Are we going to continue with them? Are we going to pursue other companies? At that point in time, might we look into hiring employees of our own district? So that's sort of a summary. A lot of the information in here is very similar to our previous contract. One of the biggest changes is the athletic trainers will be at our schools for approximately 35 hours a week. That's what's in the contract compared to our previous contract was only 20 hours a week. They did work much longer than that and put in many more hours than that. So we felt it was very important that this contract reflected that, that pretty much their full-time job is to be here at the school servicing our students.
I didn't have time to look and see. How much more is this than the other contract that we had?
About $40,000.
Okay, yeah, I knew it was going to be more, I wasn't sure how much.
Yeah. It is significantly less than if we had direct hired. And we were able to, the initial proposal they brought forward, we were able to negotiate that to bring it down a little bit. They are very eager to partner with the Nashua School District.
Okay. Questions, Kirsten?
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the agreement as presented between CPTE Health Group and the Nashua School District to provide athletic training services at Nashua High School North and South for the 2024, '25, and 2025, '26 school years. And I added to the motion, the charge for the 2024, '25 school year will be a total of $105,000. 2025, '26 will be negotiated before December 2024 and will not exceed $120,000.
Yes.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote. Aye?
Aye.
Great, another unanimous vote.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Now this?
Now this.
All right. This is, this is quite the masterpiece here.
I'm going to miss, I'm going to miss this.
Give the yes receipt.
Now, the sad thing is, it printed on two separate pieces instead of one, so I wasted some paper. It cost us about 10 cents.
Coming out of your salary.
Go ahead, that's fine.
Come get me.
All right, so just quickly to run to the back page and the second page and look in the box. So, projection is, in total, there's left $3,878,000. But of that $3,878,000, the FICA and MEDI, the pension and the benefits is $3,872,000. So those are items sent to us by the city, their allocations, and then we need to send that back. If there's extra, if they, if we overrun it for some reason, then they would cover the difference. So we don't get to spend that money on, that's sort of not our money, whereas all the other dollars are. So if you look, my projection is we're going to only have $5,969,000. Now, that's a pretty low number, an extremely low percent, but as I run through this, I feel that there's probably more in there than that. It's just the process that got it to that number. Plus, I like fives and nines, so. All right, the top part of it is salaries and wages. So when we, we take a look, if we look at the columns towards the right, you see the far right is the budget. Two in from that is what's remaining, and then the actual year-to-date is two over from that. So the numbers, July through June, those are all actual numbers. Those costs have already been incurred. The summer column, that number for wages full-time, $7,432,000, that's what we're going to pay the teachers this summer. Now, that number, I estimate that back in March, I start doing it. I worked with the controller at the city yesterday. That's pretty close to what the number's going to be, because we have the first payroll in July. The second payroll in July will be Thursday, and we'll true it up. But that's pretty much, we're pretty sure that's what the number's going to be. Then there's two other items there. One is a payment to be made that's going to get charged to next year. And then the $27,000 is, we do these one-day accruals, which I don't want to get into the whole accounting of it at all, but we accrue one day for the hourly paid people, and then at the end of five, we reverse the whole amount. So it's really just a, it's an accounting entry, but it is a charge to this year. Okay, so that's basically showing that we're going to have left about $369,000 in the payroll. Now, keep in mind, I've taken $1 million out, moved it to contracted services already.
Okay.
This number would have been higher by $1 million. I think we actually took a little bit more money. Okay, the next is those, the set of benefits that we sort of, that I talked about in the box at the bottom. So really, the only item that's, that has a remaining amount is the educational assistance line. There's $55,282 left there. So those are the funds put in by contracts that teachers and other unions can use to, in, to take courses and get masters, et cetera, and that's what's left. That, that's, wasn't, was, was not used. I think what we're starting to see is, our older teachers already have their masters. They're not going to keep taking college courses or degree-level programs. And I think some of the younger teachers are coming in with that.
Is this, the $55,000, is that city money?
That's our money.
That's our money, okay.
Okay, then the next set of numbers there, the professional and technical services. You can see that there's, they're projecting about $180,000 that's going to be remaining, and most of it is in contracted services. Now, just to take a look at the summer column in that group, I have estimating, I think there's one bill from our attorney, we pay four grand a month, Attorney Clausen. The June bill wasn't in yet, so that's what that is for. And then this $250,000 that I have in the summer column at the bottom for contracted services. That's my estimate based on some information from special ed department of the invoices from outside services that have yet to be built. So, special ed department spent way over their budget. We had to move money down to cover the contracted services. But the IT department, because of money we got from E-Rate, ended up having extra money in contracted services. That doesn't happen very frequently, but it did happen this year. So that's why, when you look at that set, you'll see it's $180,000, of which 148 of that $180,000 is on that line.
Mr. Donovan, where is the IT services in here? Which, which, which number are they?
The contracted service covers all contracted services, so it's special ed contracted services.
Oh, and the IT?
And all of them.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, next set, property services. I'm assuming about $74,000 left. Most of that is from the electricity, heating, and water. So the utilities are going to have some extra money this year. I have in the, in the summer column that there's going to be more costs coming in. See, there's 185, 40, and 16. Keep in mind, as you know, with the utility bill, for the month of June, you don't get your bill until probably the middle of July. So there's still some invoices coming in. But I think what I projected, 185, 40, and 16, is conservative. I think that's more than enough. So I think there'll probably be more money here. That's why that $5,000, the $5,900 at the end. I don't think summer bills are going to be as high as that, so I think there's going to be some.
Are we seeing any reductions yet with the solar?
Just beginning, I think, just beginning. That's why I'm hoping this coming year that you're really going to start, especially with McCarthy.
Yeah.
Okay. So, like I said, that's showing about $74,000, but I think we've got, I think we've got some comfort built in there with what I projected. The other item in there, copier maintenance contracts, is about $18,000. That, the way we pay for our copiers and maintenance, we bill upfront, we pay half. Halfway through, we pay the second half, and then they true everything up and send us a final invoice. We're supposed to get that tomorrow, so. See what it is? And if it's a little more than 18, I think there's plenty in that section of accounts to cover it. Okay, other services, if you look at that, right at the very bottom, minus 969. There's your, there's your big negative. Now, three areas that are showing negative is telephone. Every year, I budget $25,000 more than I spend $75,000. Getting a new phone system, it's going to reduce this, just so you can see it.
I'll believe it when I see it.
Exactly.
Like the tin cans and strings.
I think it's just some tech people having fun. Okay, but if you look down towards the bottom, you'll see that the transportation service, there's two lines, the third and fourth from the bottom, regular transportation services is showing $77,000 extra. And the special ed transportation services is a minus 239. Now, the reason that it's that high is if you slide over and you look at the summer column, there's $152,000 that's in there. Most of that, about $132,000 of that relates to McKinney-Vento students for bills that are about a year old. I won't get into the whole details, somebody dropped the ball, person no longer working here, so. But invoices were sent to somebody, only to that person, that person never forwarded on. So we owe another school district, because we share the cost of transportation when a child, Asher child, a temporary student Manchester, or vice versa, so we have to pay. So that's, that's what that is. The good thing is, we were able to cover that in the total budget. So it was a surprise that showed up, I don't know, about two months ago.
Okay.
So the good thing is we can cover it, and we've hopefully got things in place that would happen will never happen again.
Yeah, I mean, this is something that's going to happen. This is a cost that we're going to have every year, pretty much, for those students. It's just going to be accounted for differently, because we'll know about it, we'll pay it when it's due.
Exactly.
Okay.
And we'll, for example, if the other school district doesn't send us the bills, we'll say, what are you doing? I need this now. If you want to get paid, I need it now.
Okay.
But I think, if I can just add, as a district, I think we also should be doing some cost sharing with the school districts around, and we haven't been doing a great job of that. So moving forward, we will be doing kind of the similar process. So if, you know, if Manchester's cost sharing with us, and we have certain kids here in Nashua, vice versa, we'll go ahead and invoice them a cost share too. So to Dan's point, this should never happen again. We have a process in place, all invoices need to be going to accounts payable moving forward. So we've dug into it, and I think we're in a better spot to not have a surprise like this in the future.
So this is with some of the smaller towns around the cost sharing?
Any of the McKinney-Vento students we do cost share with. So if they're homeless in transition, like Manchester, we work with, we work with Milford. It could be any of the school districts around.
Okay.
Okay, and then the big reason why this is negative is the tuition out of district, okay? So, see, I've accrued about $350,000 more. In total, we're going to be about $6.7 to $6.8 million in tuition. Budget was only about $5.9 million. This is the first year that we've gone over this budget in about, since COVID, okay? We used to go over it significantly. The thing we do have available is we have a special revenue fund that we're revenue for students that come to our Heart of Hearing program, or Brentwood, or any of those other programs. Those funds go into the special revenue fund, and we can use those to pay for items that go over budget, like out-of- go over budget, like out of district or maybe even contracted service. So that is available. What I try to do is use all the operating budget before we have to go into the special revenue fund, because we get to keep that special revenue fund, you get to keep that money, you don't lose it, rolls over every year. So, I think we're getting back to the point where we did increase this in next year's budget, but if it stays at this level, $6.7, $6.8, if it continues to go up, we're going to have to use, you know, we do have that safeguard, that special revenue fund, to cover those costs. So it's not as bad as it seems, but we're back to where we used to be. So we're creeping up slightly with the number of students, but the cost at these schools is significant for some of these students.
Before COVID, did you have to go into the special revenue fund mostly every year?
Many years, many years.
Yeah.
Yes.
Did we get close to a point where the special revenue fund was depleted?
It decreased significantly. It never, you can't deplete it, it's got to have a balance, but it went way down. And I think over the last four or five years, it's gone way up.
Oh, that's good.
Because A, we haven't charged much there at all, and B, because the, because the costs weren't that high during COVID, for some reason, the students.
Yeah, probably parents were afraid to send their kids.
Maybe, but it was for a number of years. It was kind of hard to truly figure out, maybe a bunch of kids left at once to move south. I don't know what happened, but.
Okay.
They're starting to come back up. But there is a very good process in place, Special Ed. Red sheet tracks each and every kid, month by month, so we are, this is not going to be a surprise, we always know about it.
Okay.
Share was, I think really, it was just the schools are charging a lot more money now. Because, I mean, they have to hire the people to provide the services, and I'm sure those costs are higher. Okay, next, supplies and materials. Now, this one is about $164,000 left. Most of these accounts are probably done. There's probably not much to come in against it. So I'm guessing that this number will only go up, which once again makes me, the $5,000 is going to turn out to be higher than that. Lot of these, the beginning parts of these accounts, the office supplies, ed supplies, those are all school-based funds, and if they didn't spend it, then they didn't spend it. And then there's a number of items, supplies, like the electrical plumbing, HVAC, the plant ops. So there's usually money left over because of the process, but that number will only get better, that number won't get worse. Okay, indirect costs, those are the fees we get to charge the grants and get back as a credit. Probably going to get about, I'm estimating about $21,000 more than we budgeted. About $240,000 and $260,000. But there's still, you know, the end of the month, ended up all done yet. And then computer equipment and all the other equipment, it's about $34,000. Probably about half of that is the computer software and hardware, mostly sort of IT kind of things. As I mentioned, they got a lot of money from E-Rate. Should be pretty comfortable with that number. And we have a couple entries to make related to facility rentals and sports fees. Those come in as income to the operating budget. That's why those numbers, if you look at them, it is, the budgeted is negative. Should have. The facility rentals this year, it looks like it's well above what we budgeted, and the sports fees are probably within $10,000. So I think all in all, we should be fine. Armed by the $5,969, I guess it's probably more than that when this is all said and done, which by the, in about, I don't know, two more weeks from now, it'll be all done.
Looks good. Yeah, I mean, with it coming down so close, I guess this must have been a lot of hard work that you guys did to get this to here, so thank you. I'm sorry, I can't remember. I don't have to make any motions for that, right?
Oh, I see.
Educational. I don't have to make any motions for that, right?
If you want, just to accept it, because we usually just accept the financial report, and instead of going, this is sort of going over, instead of going over the financial report, we go over the forecast, so.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the fiscal year '24 initial year-end forecast.
Second.
And aye.
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 Okay, thanks. And then, just the transfer reports, right?
Correct.
Excellent.
All right, we've got a few big ones in here.
Ooh, that is a big one.
Okay, so the first one is sort of related to technology. So what happened was, after we had the cyber attack a year ago, a little more than a year and a few months ago, we had to put, we had to go out and purchase some new software. The budget for this coming year was already done, so we reached out to the city and said, okay, you've put some money aside to cover the cyber attack, can we have some of that to cover this software? Because we didn't put it in the budget. The city said, sure, but you're not going to get it for a few months, you're going to find the money somewhere. So I took the money from electricity, I put it into IT, they purchased the software, and this is just putting the money back into electricity since we got the money from the city, like in March.
Okay.
That's what that one is. Next one, technology. So they took from their contracted services, because remember earlier I said they had extra money in contracted services? This was some of it, they moved it to computer equipment, and they purchased a bunch of Chromebooks. I believe these are the Chromebooks that go on McCarthy.
Okay.
Okay, plant operations, $51,000. Now, this one is a, we had an agreement in place with this company called Freedom Energy. They have a solar facility. We signed up with them, the agreement was we'd get a piece of the action. So at the end of each quarter, they would give us a small amount of money, depending on what they generated. So the city came to us and said, we have, the net metering laws changed, and with the dams we have, we have the two dams on the Nashua River, there was an opportunity for the city using the net metering and using those. If we could get out of this agreement, Freedom, and join in with the city, as a city, we'd save more money, probably about $200,000 more.
Great.
He agreed to drop the agreement with Freedom, and there was a termination fee of $51,000. Now, the city said they'd pay it, and then, of course, they said, well, we can't find the money right now. So basically, they allowed us to use some of the benefit money. So there was excess benefit money, remember I said we can't touch that? Voila.
Okay. So that's why this isn't reflected in the budget or anything. Okay, cool. Well, that's good.
Yep. Citywide, it's a good thing. We're going to save money as a state. Sean just doesn't get the little checks each quarter, but life goes on. Okay, next one is the nurses, each, I think it's third grade, that we test students for eyesight. And we've been doing that, we've been using outside vendors to help us out. And so the nurses, then the outside vendors started going, I'm too busy, I don't have time, I'll have to charge you too much. So the nurses started, they found one of these, it's a vision screener, and they said, if you can get us two of those, we don't have to use an outside service. I took some of the extra money that we had in the educational patient account, it had And I moved it in here, and we bought the vision screener. So now the nurses have those, they're happy with that, and going forward, it's sort of a one-time cost going forward, we should be saving money, and all the students will be that service, and it'll be done by the nurse in their own building.
Okay. And there's two of them, right? So they'll have to share.
Share.
Okay.
Gina, who's the head nurse from Elm Street. Okay, next one. Okay, so this is for contracted, okay, so this is another contracted services for Special Ed. So we took the money, this was excess labor money. So actually, what I said before, a million dollars, is a million four. So we took $425,000 out of the excess labor, $400,000 of it to cover the extra cost, the special education needed for contract services, and the other 25 was to cover the, talk about it anymore. All right, next one. One of the requests that has come across my desk two or three different times over the last couple of years was the North weight room really needed some more PE equipment compared to its South. There was a student that won some sort of wish, make-a-wish thing or something, and he decided to take the money and donate it to the South weight room. They got a lot of new stuff. So North didn't get that. We haven't replenished a number of their items, so that PE teacher there said, can you get me anything? So this is $5,000 of it.
Okay.
To him, and he should be happy, for at least a year. Okay, next one is, this is an entry you won't see anymore because of the way we're budgeting. Historically, we always had the subs done, we paid them ourselves, we hired this company, ESR. Last couple of years, we budgeted in the labor accounts as if those people were working for us. Now that we hire them, so we need to take it out of that account and move it down. That's all that is, but we budgeted it for this coming year in the right place, so these are.
Okay.
That is the last one.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Money over $10,000.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to accept the fiscal year '24 June transfer report.
Second.
And aye.
Aye.
Jen, do you want to? Okay, sorry, couldn't hear you.
I didn't have my mic on anyway.
And I guess we're all done. So, right? Okay, so I want to make a motion to end the meeting, to adjourn.
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Okay, we're all set. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Donovan.